Welcome to the Zonie Board of Appeals for the Town of Webster. Today, May 13, 2025. We have a very full agenda tonight. We have 10 items on the agenda. Well, nine items on the agenda. One of the items that was on the agenda has been tabled until June 10. That is Mama Laura's subdivision class that has been tabled until June 10. So we do have nine items on the agenda. I have a proof of legal publication for all items here. The board does have the right to stop the board at 10:00 PM if it continues on. So we do reserve that right. There is also a limit of five minutes per person for public speaking. So again, the full agenda, we're going to hold to that. Call for attendance.
Mr. Short?
Here.
Mr. Fanta?
Here.
Mr. Presta?
Here.
Mr. Muscar?
Here.
Mr. Orso?
Here.
Mr. Forsey?
Here.
Mr. Tusto?
Here.
Mr. DeMarco?
Atten.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. What allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So first item on our list.
Before we go through the agenda to start the meeting, I just want to make a reminder out to the applicant board that the PowerPoint presentation is a one-to-one with every application that was submitted for tonight's meeting. So it is the goal of the applicant to go through that five criteria that will be up on the screen. It's the criteria you filled out in your application to obtain an area variance. So just want to remind the board and the applicants of that before we get started.
Thank you.
And the first project is 1023 Wickerton Lane, applicant Patrick Vino. Is that correct?
Oh, Vino.
Oh, Vino, sorry.
That's okay.
It's an R3 single-family residential district requesting a 45.10 foot rear setback where the minimum required is 50 with the proposal construction of an approximately 598 square foot two-story addition. Relative section to the code is Section 358-12, V5C, minimum setbacks for the backyard. So hand it over to you.
Okay. As mentioned, I'd like to add about a 600 square foot addition to the rear of my house. It'll require a five-foot variance off the rear setback, mainly adding an extra bedroom upstairs if I was a little older and I'd like my daughters to have separate bedrooms as possible.
So we'll start with the character of the neighborhood. We'll just discuss those issues. The character of the neighborhood?
Yep. Yep, so the plan is not to change the character of the neighborhood. We're maintaining the same fight as it is now. Same siding, same, you know, no real impact to the lot or the house. Alternatives. Basically, proposed addition doesn't create the extra space for my daughters to have their separate bedrooms. We really like the neighborhood, like the schools that we're in, prefer not to move. Housing market isn't always the greatest and affordable four-bedrooms homes is a little challenging right now.
I think the intent, part of the intent was, did you consider alternate locations, alternate solutions to what you are presenting?
Yeah, so the layout of the house creates a bit of a hardship that the way it's laid out, it couldn't go on the other side of the lot. It's got a cathedral ceiling, but completely changing mess up the layout of the house. So requested substantial deviation. Basically, no real major effects to the neighborhood, continue to function as the same. And, you know, creating or getting this variance does not create any adverse effects on the value or desirability of any of the nearby properties. Should also be no impact to the environment, you know, not introduce any kind of flooding or runoff. Gutters and whatnot will be maintained and connected to the existing drainage systems where possible. Again, this isn't sort of self-created. Due to the layout of the house, this is the only location we can put it. The lot is a little kind of wonky with some of the angles, so shouldn't cause any greater issues.
Any questions?
All right. So all of them to the board. Any questions?
Siding, everything's going to remain the same as what's in place now.
Yep.
So this is a two-story addition, correct?
It is.
Height-wise, I mean, there is a section here. We're showing eight-foot ceilings. Don't have an overall height. In relation to your current house, what would the height be? I mean, you've got three, four different eaves on the house. Where's the eve of this addition going to land?
Which should be even higher than the rest of the house.
When we say the rest of the house, because the garage ridge is lower the main half, right?
Garage goes like this.
Yep.
So we're going to be behind it like this, behind the garage. Only four feet will be extended out, if you would see from the road. And the roof would come down, part would come down over the garage, the rest of the house like this.
So it will be taller than the garagee, but it will not be any taller than the main house's height?
No, no, we'll maintain all the sapids. The house has sapids on every roofline and all four sides. We'll maintain all the sapids to keep the character of the original construction.
So if you can look at the screen here, right, we've got the garage up on the left. Where the cursor is, that is the highest ridge. Is that the ridge that you were talking about? Or is it actually the lower ridge, is it not? Is that there?
We won't be raising the height, ceiling of the rooms. They'll be equal, they'll be equal with the existing house and the roof pitch will be equal with the highest peak in the house that you will see from the side.
Josh, can you go back to Ariel here real quick? So there's that, if you can see the cursor, there's that ridge. Unfortunately, I did get to see the house, but I wasn't able to meet with anybody there. Otherwise, I would have asked these questions while I was there. There's that ridge where the cursor is, and then there's a higher ridge there. Which ridge is the addition going to match? Because the addition is going to be closer to the lower ridge based on the locations.
Can we just give you a moment?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I approach?
Yeah, sure.
The drawings on this are relatively, we are prior to our check.
Yep, I did go through those.
This is, this is the existing house. This is the garage, okay?
Yep.
This is the existing house right here.
Okay.
And this is our new one. So the ridgeline can be people to look to see on the side.
I'm just trying to figure out if this ridge is, if there's three, if there's actually three ridges.
This house has extensive roofs.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Whatever drill up with.
Yeah, exactly. So when I maintain here, it's the same pitch.
Yep.
So that the look is the same.
Okay.
This wall will look against this wall. This sapid will have a check like that. That part is sapid, that's the ground.
Sure.
And the wall starts right there.
Okay.
And then we come up 14, goes on the road.
Yep.
14.
Yep.
And then after changes. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Another question I have, have you had any communications with your neighbors to the rear? I believe it's like 991 Jackson and 989 Jackson?
Not 989. I have talked to 991. They seem to have a problem.
Sure. Any other questions from the board?
It's currently a three-bedroom, going to a four.
Yes.
And the sapid, I saw that you couldn't do a certain areas. It was, you would have to reconfigure your current sapid system. Is that what I was reading?
Not sapid, just the layout of the house.
Okay. I thought it said something about requiring the reconfiguration of sapid system.
No, we're on, we're on.
Any other?
It's an off source.
Yeah.
Unless you look at, we're on a thing.
Actually, I do have a question. Go forward. The, it's a bedroom on the second floor. What's going on in the first floor?
The first floor?
Yes.
Well, the point is, we need bedrooms upstairs in the main living area. We need four bedrooms. One of the smallest bedrooms on this side that would be adjoining the kitchen. Part of that is becoming a hallway into the new addition for the two bedrooms that are upstairs, thus leaving the downstairs large area. There'll be a master bath put down there with a guest room, bedroom down below.
Thank you. The addition does have three bedrooms in itself, correct?
It has three now. One's coming out to become partially a hallway to the new addition. So there'll be four bedrooms upstairs and a suite downstairs for company, unpacked.
Is that, this becomes a total of five bedrooms? The house, when it's all set?
Yeah, it'll be four up, one down.
Four up, one down. So it becomes a total of five bedrooms?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Right, because the addition will have two bedrooms upstairs and one bedroom downstairs.
Correct.
It will also have, looks like a laundry room is upstairs and then some storage, sink space, shower, I guess a kind of a suite type space on a personal.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Vote on a seeker. Make a motion for a Type 2 action under seeker pursuant to NYCR Section 617.5 of the Environmental Code. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does anybody want to go through the findings on this? Sorry. Let's start off. Because of the location of the addition being in the rear of the property, it does not affect the essential character of the neighborhood itself. Only a small portion of the addition will be seen above the garage worldwide. Due to the layout of the current house, this is really the only location to be able to place the addition itself, to be able to have the bedrooms. Location to the south would not work with the current layout of the property itself. This is not a significant addition. I believe it's about 500 square feet, if I remember correctly. So it's not significant, any means, environmental, physical environmental conditions of the area are not being greatly affected in the area. Though this is self-created, the layout itself and the desire, again, does not have a significant effect to the neighborhood. Anybody else want to add anything? All right. Make a motion for, make a motion for the Wickerton addition located at 1023 Wickerton Lane for an area variance to allow a rear setback of 45.10 where 50 feet is required associated with the construction of approximately 598 square foot addition to a single-family dwelling, counting parcel number SPL079.16-3-20 located in R3 Single Family Residential District under Section 350-12 of the Code of the Town of Webster. Do I have a second? Sergeant?
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Orso?
Aye.
Mr. Muscar?
Aye.
Mr. Presta?
Aye.
Mr. Fanta?
Aye.
All right. You have your variance. You do need to obtain all applicable codes, building permits. You have one year to complete your, to complete your project as well.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. $20,000 to, for that addition? Can I get the name of your contractor?
And contractor.
Okay.
This can be family thing, so that's why it's all on.
Aaron?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Hart addition located at 624 Maple Drive.
So 624 Maple Drive, applicant William Hart, zoning district R3 Single Family Residential is requesting a 6.3 rear setback where minimum required is 50 with the construction of an approximately 224 square foot pre-seasoned.
Okay. If you go to the instrument survey map, there's probably the easiest way to explain this. So the addition will be at the back of the house. It's, if you look at the north side, you'll see a current structure. There used to be a hot tub room. It is falling apart. And then there's a deck. And then where the red rectangle is, is where we plan to build out for the addition.
The deck is remaining?
I'm sorry?
The deck is, sorry, the deck is remaining?
Yes. By the way, the ridge line of the addition is going to be about three feet below and perpendicular to the ridge line of the house.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you take me down the hot tub room's falling apart? Yeah, it's, it won't take much for me.
Just a cool breeze, right?
Yeah. Character of the neighborhood, we don't anticipate any adverse effect in the neighborhood. Siding of the house or of the addition will be the same as the siding on the house. And I just want to point out that the entire house is surrounded by undeveloped woodroom. Alternates considered, we've considered one alternate, and that is where the existing hot tub room is. However, that would not work. And if, can we just go back to the map here? So if you look at the map, the area where the existing hot tub is, is only about 10 feet, and we're looking at building a 14 by 16. In addition, as was mentioned previously, the sapids, as you can say, are the collection tank and then piping into the leach field. So we would have to work around that. And lastly, the connection point to the house would go right into the master bedroom there. So that's not particularly desirable. We go into substantiality. The room that we're proposing to build is about 0.005 acres on a 1.8 acre lot. So we think that the small size of both the variance and the room would render it not particularly substantial. Effect on the environment. For drainage, we're going to put gutters on the room and tie that into the existing gutter system. So we'll be using the existing drainage. Traffic, I think, is not applicable. I don't know what circulation means. Somebody tell me.
It's movement around your body. It's not applicable to this particular project.
Thank you. Dust and noise, obviously during construction, there would be some dust and noise, but that would be short-term. In addition, any dust or noise would be mitigated from the neighbor's perspective because of the surrounding undeveloped woodroom. Odor, I don't think is applicable. Public services, we will have electrical in the room, but that's it. And, you know, so we've concluded that it shouldn't be an impact on the variance. Self-created difficulty. It's really the pre-existing conditions and layout of the house. So the house itself is about 71 feet. We add about 10 feet at the, with the hot tub room that's going to be demolished, about 35 feet of deck. That leaves about 25 feet where we're proposing to put the room.
Open up to the board for any questions, comments that may have. It's very private there. I don't think it's going to be that much. Did you have any correspondence with your neighbors to the south or to the east of you?
I did, with both of them, and they're both willing to support the variance.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you're, you're deep into the woods, so it's, I think there's quite a bit of wooded property between you and your neighbors, so I don't see any issues here. Any other questions from, any other members from the board? All right. With that, I'll make a motion for seeker, for Type 2 action under seeker pursuant to NYCR Section 617.5 of the Environmental Code. Do I have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to do the findings? All right. Essential character of the property, you're, I gotta say, deep in the woods, but you are surrounded by a wooded lot in all areas. By making, it's really not going to affect the surrounding neighborhood. As part of this project, we are going to be tearing down a smaller, or a small hot tub addition as well. So though this is a little bit larger, we are moving, trading one for the other. There, though, you did look at the location of the hot tub, which would keep you behind the 50-foot mark. That location does not access family space. It does only access the master bedroom, so it was not an ideal location. The orientation of your house to the property line is not parallel. It's kind of off by about five or six degrees, which is also causing some of the issues with the, with the sapids. This is not a significant change. Again, we're removing one addition and we are adding another addition. Physical environmental conditions are not changing. That area is not wooded. You're not really affecting anything in that particular area. Though again, self-created because it's something that the applicant desires. It is the most practical location, and it's a detriment to the project itself, to the property or the surrounding areas itself. With, anybody else want to share anything else on the findings? Oh, all right. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for an area variance located at 624 Maple Drive to allow a rear setback of 46.3 feet where 50 feet is required in association with the construction of approximately 224 square foot pre-seasoned bedroom to a, to a single-family dwelling on a 1.8 acre parcel having SPL063.16-1-10 located in R3 Family Residential District. This also includes the removal of an existing hot tub sun pre-season as well. Under Section 350-12 of the Code of the Town of Webster. Do I have a second?
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Fanta?
Aye.
Mr. Fanta?
Aye.
All right. You have your variance. You have, you will need to get a building permit. You have one year to obtain or to complete the project.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good night.
Same to you.
Next up, we have the Argento Casino.
Located at 18 Grishlable Road, applicant Jason Argento, and representing the name of Julie Huss and Pauline Fior. Located in a large residential district, has to allow a 1,208 square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming metal polearm, which would bring the total size of the secondary structure to 2,120 square feet. So this associated sections of the code is 35036 accessory buildings and then 35095 alterations or extensions of non-conforming buildings.
Okay, hi, I'm Kevin Fior. Jason was called out of town, and this is Julie Huss's significant other. So I, I'm tired of campaigning, so I offered to come and speak on to the rehab. We have a pre-existing non-conforming metal polearm, and they would like to build a open gazebo or picnic shelter where the roofline maintains the existing gable roofline of the metal building. And the sides are open with post and hatter typical shelter.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for an area variance located at 624 Maple Drive to allow rear setback of 46.3 feet, where 50 feet is required in association with the construction of approximately 224 square foot preseason bedroom to a, to a single-family dwelling on a 1.8 acre parcel having SPL 063.16-1-10 located in our three-family residential district. This also includes the removal of an existing hot tub sunpreseason as well. Under section 350-12, the code of town of, the last, the last second.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Laska? Mr. Garrett?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Sanado?
You have your variance, you have, you will need to get a building permit. You have one year to obtain or to complete the project.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good night.
Same to you.
Next up, we have the Argento gazebo.
Located at 18 Grishle Road in Applebee's in Argento and representing the name of Julie Huss and Helen Fure. Located in a large lot residential district, has to allow a 1,208 square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming pole barn, which would bring the total size of the secondary structure to 2,120 square feet. So this associated sections of the code is 35036 accessory buildings and then 3595 alterations or extensions of non-conforming buildings.
Okay, hi, I'm Kevin Fure. Jason was called out of town. And this is Julie Huss, his significant other. So I, I took her time to get this, I offered to come and speak on the repair. We have a pre-existing non-conforming metal pole barn. And they would like to build a open gazebo or picnic shelter where the roofline matches the existing gable roofline of the metal building. And the sides are open with posts and hatter typical shelter or gazebo. There's no intention for concrete at this point. They haven't decided if they would hardscape it or gravel it, et cetera, et cetera. The reason for the structure is that not only do they have two dogs and they'd like to be able to be outside and entertain when it's raining or it's being sun. So they put a couple of technical cables in it. Where they're located is all large lots. It's in pretty much west to east, so it's not as dense as west to west these days. So it's not unusual to have accessory structures or bars in that part of town. The building is pretty much sheltered or visually from the road because of Fourmount Creek. And, okay, so for those reasons, we don't think it's really going to change the character of the neighborhood. We did consider alternatives, but this just seemed a logical spot to put it where the least visible from the road and from the neighbors to east side against Fourmount Creek in all woods. And the neighbor on the west side is not going to be able to see it because it's on the east side of the creek system that is in the former pole barn. Substantially, I mean, the variance is not really asking for a setback, but it is asking for a reasonable sized grant from the TMA. But, but the addition, the one structure at 900 square feet, pre-existing, was everybody bought the house and this structure's open. It's just a roofline and posts and, and a hat. The impact on the environment is negligible. It drains on grade, there's no impervious surface being added at this point in time. Honestly, everything is at the Fourmount Creek. It is self-created, okay? There's no question of that. But given the size of a lot and just putting it where it's least visible from the road or have any impact on the neighborhood or the rest of the neighbors, it seemed like the logical spot to put it where it would be least noticeable. And the other agents, are there any questions?
Can you tell me what the height of the eve of the existing building is?
The height of the existing grid on the pole barn, which we're going to match, I'm going to say is 15, 16 feet.
That's what I guessed when I was out there.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm just, I built their addition, but I'm, it's a guess from memory. My memory's not as great as it used to be. Unfortunately, no words.
Other questions from the board?
You said he hasn't decided what he's going to do for a floor yet, gravel?
They're, they're going to remove the side and gravel it and then either pour concrete at some point or hardscape it and pave it.
So you're assuming he would have this all done before and finalized everything? Okay.
And, and I think part of the floor, the floor ambiguity is, you know, a cost factor to be on. Yeah, I mean, either one's probably more than putting the structure up.
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately.
There is a small, a small slope in the back of the building, right? And it dished down a little bit.
It will be leveled out, yeah.
It will be, so it'll be the same, so the floor of the gazebo will be the same floor as the?
The height one.
As the pole barn itself.
Pole barn, yeah.
Okay. You have no intentions of enclosing this gazebo?
No.
Are you running any electric or plan to put any lights in?
At this point in time, Jason and I spoke about it and he doesn't have any real plans. I'm like, well, you can always do solar. I mean, it's not going to be a workshop and it's not going to be enclosed. I mean, he's got the pole barn and garage and he does use those for that. I mean, he's, okay. But at best, maybe it ends up with a couple of plugs and lights. I mean.
This is electricity in the pole barn, so I can see us maybe streaming lights across.
Sure.
But nothing's, never happened.
Yeah, it's literally six, it's literally six by sixes at 10 or 12 feet. And micromillimeter headers, pressure meter headers, reactors on a, not a roof to line up with the existing pole barn.
Erica, you, you had indicated on, or it was indicated on the slideshow, the existing pole barn, the addition would be about 2,200 square feet, I think is what it said, right?
That's correct.
Yes, the pole barn is 900 and change and the addition is 1200, so it's.
2,100 and change?
Yeah, it's close enough to 2,200.
I don't have any question. Anybody else have questions? So we're doing, this is an area variance because of total square foot of building? Is that, I just want to make sure that we're, that's, or is it because it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure?
I think it's both. I wasn't really sure myself, but.
It's an addition to a pre-existing.
To the existing non-conforming. And, and then the total square footage exceeds, what's it, 1200, I think?
Yes.
2,500, I think is the max, right? For, for an accessory building, I think is what it is. Okay. That, I'd like to make a motion for a type two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section 617.5 of the environmental code. Have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor? Anybody want to go through the findings? The area of, the central character, this is in a large lot residential district. Property of most of the properties out there are three plus acres. This parcel is five acres. There are a lot of pole barn structures in this area. So having a, an open gazebo attached to existing pole barn structure is not, not upside the character of this area. There is, there is no other remedy. Other areas were looked at. This is really the best solution, most cost-effective solution to be able to provide the, I think, gazebo, open, what do you call it? Open air pavilion for the, for this property. Significance, it is a, and this is 1,200 square foot open gazebo, or open pavilion that is being installed is not insignificant. However, due to the large lot, the surrounding area and pole barns in that area is not a significant impact to the, to the area. And again, it's not here any, any, any other setbacks or any neighbors as well. Physical, environmental conditions, they're not affecting any groundwater, any drainage or they are affecting about 1,200 square feet green area. But again, not, not significant. Again, it is, because it is a need, it is a self-created element, but this really is the best solution for, for this whole compare, gazebo area. Anybody else want to add anything to the, to the findings? All right. With that, I'd like to make a motion for an area variance to allow a 1,208 square foot open air pavilion located, addition located at 1840 Shlable Road to a, in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming 912 square foot pole barn for a total area of the accessory structure of 2,120 square feet on a 5.2 acre parcel having SPL 066.01-1-46.1 located in a large lot residential district under sections 350-13, 350-36, 350-95 of the code of town of Wester. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Laska?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
Mr. Prescott?
Aye.
Mr. Sanado?
Aye.
All right, you have one year to complete the project. You will need to obtain a building permit for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great night. Next up, we have 255 Princeton Road.
So property address 255 Princeton Road, applicant just said, just a bit too, is in a zoning district. Our three single-family is requesting a special use permit to maintain six chickens on a 28 acre parcel. So I'm requesting a special use permit in order to maintain six chickens on my property. This will be located in my fenced-in backyard. The exact location of the coop would be something that I would decide when I get the materials, judging by shade and also level ground. But it would be somewhere near the existing garage. And that would be a coop at first that would have a small chicken run on it, but I could expand that, that was part of the plans as they grow. This is something that I'm sure you're aware, it's becoming increasingly popular in residential areas. And there's a lot of different materials out there, research done on how this can be done that would still be a nice hobby for people, but also it could be something that's done in a neighborhood and doesn't affect the neighborhood.
So you mentioned by the garage, the images we were looking at is, is that red rectangle the area you were considering?
It could be. I'm just, kind of now that I'm looking into it more, I think that it would be maybe better to have it clipped through the garage just for the shade and just the lawn there might be better. So I, I mean, it's kind of an open ended where it might end up.
Fair enough. But your backyard is fully empty?
Correct, yeah, and chain link all the way around.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
You're not doing a rooster?
Your, oh, yeah. I mean, that would be something that's up to you guys. From the research that I've done, it does seem that sometimes without a rooster, the hens sometimes don't have this happy of a life because they rely on the roosters to protect the flock. I understand there are noise issues with roosters. But the types of chickens that I'm interested in are called bantam silky chickens. So they're really small and they historically don't grow as often. And understanding you can only have one rooster in the flock anyways. So there's considerations there. I would like to be able to have a rooster just for the well-being of the hens.
I will say, generally, we do not allow roosters for the, for the noise. So I, but we'll, we'll have a discussion later. Any other questions?
Yes. Have you talked to your neighbors about this?
I have not. One of the neighbors directly to the siding, there's renters there and as far as I know, no one else has moved in. And then my other neighbors really don't come out much, don't talk much. But the sign's been there and I've seen a lot of people slow down to look at the sign. So I'm sure if they had any questions, they would ask or they would be here. It's kind of just the neighborhood, just everyone keeps to themselves and minds their business for the most part, so.
Are you playing on, so you, you mentioned the first coop that you get will end up having a small run to it?
Yes.
And that evolves? Is your intent to let them roam free in your backyard? And the reason I ask that is, though chickens don't fly, they do jump with their wings and they will jump over and chain link fence and go onto your neighbor's property.
Correct. No, I do not plan on letting them free range for their safety as well. Just with predators around, I don't want that for them. So I brought a couple of pictures. I can bring them up or just show. This would be kind of like the coop that is prefabbed. And then I would either build an extra wood extension for the run or you can purchase ones that are made of chain link that sort of attach to the coop to give them more space, but it would be enclosed, so they're not able to jump or fly.
Including a, a lid?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Does anybody want to see the picture of the coop?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the only other question I would have is if you go with your, whatever design you go with, protection for other animals getting in because foxes can jump pretty high and everything, certainly be covering over it.
Yes, and from our research, hardware cloth is the only way to keep out predators. So that's something that I'm aware that I'll have to enclose everything in there to make sure that they're safe.
You don't want to go down either 24 inches into the ground or 24 inches out, so people don't take over the question?
Yeah, don't try to fan it out underneath, yeah.
All right. I don't have any further questions. I will, I'll leave it up to the board, but I would recommend, I think you indicated on six hens or chickens, correct?
Correct.
I am going to limit it to hens and not roosters. So when you do go purchase them, make sure you don't get stray blood.
Sure.
Those are, you, you'll never know. So would that, like to make a motion?
Can we have a little discussion?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, you, don't, don't take this the wrong way. But I live next door to somebody that raises chickens illegally on a regular basis. Every summer, we go through the same issue with them. And the chickens are allowed. They don't bother me, but my neighbors down the street, even further away, are always complaining about the chickens up on the hill. And personally, I, you live in a very residential area, not in a big lot at all. I have a hard time on that basis. I'm just, I don't know what the rest of the world, how the rest of the world feels about it. But it's, that would be my position on this.
Let's go ask to follow up on that. You had, I'm a chicken expert, I have no shape or form. The ones that you're looking into don't have any hysteria of making noise, you said?
No, I mean, these are, I'm not sure what ones are in your neighborhood, but these are, they're not raised for egg laying or for meat. They're literally just the little tiny fluffy ones that look like they're poodles. So they, they don't make as much noise as a regular chicken because they've been frankly inbred to not do that. People keep them in their homes. But, I mean, as far as the noise goes, I feel like people leave their dogs out in the yard or there's other, you know, wild birds out that make noise. It's just one of those things where every animal makes noise, you know?
Josh, with this question, you use it's a one year from the initial, is that correct?
It can be anywhere that the board determines between one year and five years.
Correct.
And then, is there a play, let's say they do make a little, because to your point, they don't make noise or deter in the morning. Is there a spot in your yard that might suit better that if they do make a little noise, it might be muffled? You got more trees or it won't raise as much? Because to his point, you are in a very tight residential area. And it sounds like the neighbors don't come out, but maybe they'll start coming out more to greet you. Is there an area that might suit better, they kind of hide down a little bit?
I feel like all the way towards the back fence. Because then, as you can see, the neighbors will also have their entire yard before it's their house. So instead of it being closer towards my house, where then it has the two neighbors on the side, probably the least noise would be all the way in the back.
Does that pose a problem like getting to the coop further? Does it have to be close to the house?
No.
I mean, that might be something to consider, it's just for precautionary reasons. If moving forward, the placement of where it goes is equally important?
It is, it's a, it is a small lot.
It is, it's a, it is a small lot. That she's talking about, the size of the block, six hens is not significant, it's easy to stop an obsession with, just put something that, maybe on median block, if somebody was complaining, that maybe that, you know, the coefficient of the unit would be moved. Sorry, my question?
No, that's alright, I thought you were just talking to me.
It's a, it's a great comment, I mean, in all honesty, it is, when chickens lay an egg, they all do a chicken song, they do, they rally each other on themselves. Any other, have any questions or?
He actually pressed a button, you said one of your neighbors is a renter?
Yes.
Now, you said you, you talked to the person who owns the property that rents it out, because it changed people renting, that be a problem too with the area that you went picking?
Their house has been abandoned for quite a while, so there's an owner that he'll have it rented for a few months and then it's empty for a year, so it's kind of hard to say when or if he would get another renter.
Which parcel is it that's the?
The rental.
To the right, if you're looking, looking at my house from the street, it's the one to the right.
So two fifty two or eighty three?
Yes. Yeah, the one with the pool, they're not renters.
The one at two fifty seven is the ones that you, you forgot to see out, is that correct?
Correct.
Any questions? We'll have a discussion. Like to make a, so I, it's, I'm gonna let it, again, I think unless the board disagrees, I think we should limit it to the hens, no more than six. We are gonna do go a one year variance on this, this way, you know, you'll have to come back in a year from now, see how things run with your neighbors, like can tell you in the past, we've had, when the, when the variance was up for renewal, we've had neighbors come in and speak against, so be cognizant of that. It's always, it's always recommended to have good conversations with your neighbors, and if you're getting eggs, give your neighbor some free eggs, that always helps. But with that, I'll make a motion for a thank two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section six one seven five, environmental code. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion, findings, so we're looking at, so this special use will not prevent or lead up for reasonable use to adjacent properties. We're talking about six hens, you know, animals who make noise, it's been a concern along with other animals, predators coming in from the property. The applicant has indicated that she will be providing an enclosed chicken run as well as, as well as a coop with wire net throughout. This does not cause a health issue, this is a more common use, and currents in the town of Webster. Able to manage a few, any preservation or characteristics of the neighborhood, history characters, photography of the proposed site, there's no issues there. And then, so with that, I'd make a motion for a special use permit located at two five five Princeton Road, to allow a twelve foot by eight foot chicken coop and no more than, with no more than six hens, on a zero point two eight acre parcel having SPL zero six three point one eight four four dash three, located in R three, single family residential district, under sections three fifty dash one zero, three fifty dash seven five, three fifty dash one zero three, code of town of Webster. Do I have a second?
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Mascare?
Aye.
Mr. Corso? Mr. Fresca?
Aye.
Alright, you have your special use variance, you have, you have all set up, and you will have to leave back here in one year for us to check in to see how things are going, or another special use variance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have five 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 Hills Pond Road.
Five 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 Hills Pond Road applicant David Melissa Phelps are requesting a special use permit to maintain five chicken in a zero point two three acre parcel located in R three, single family residential district.
Hi, good evening, yes, I'm looking for a special use permit for a chicken coop for five hens, no roosters, or rooster I should say. These are going to be used to provide eggs for my family and my boys, and also a good learning exercise for them growing up as young adults. I've done a lot of research on chickens, my family has done a lot of research on chickens, and understand what the responsibility is there. We're looking to purchase a pre-made plastic, nice looking plastic, insulated unit coop that has a run attached to it with a, with a lid over top, but I do have pictures of Tony wanting to see it, but, and the intention is to place it adjacent to my shed, the red square there is a little bit to the west in the line in time I'm doing it, it's actually going to be the part of what my garden is right now, right next to the shed. I have talked to my immediate neighbors to the east and west of my house, along with others, as you continue down the road and across the street, they were all in full support of it. I have not talked to the owner of the undeveloped seven acre parcel behind my house, but I have a good relationship with him and I don't believe there would be an issue there. I do not think that this is gonna impact the character of the neighborhood at all. Again, no roosters, I'm very that, and for egg, that's helpful. I do not intend on selling these in a cart at my front house, my house right now.
I appreciate that. Questions from the board?
Usually the lot is not, your backyard is not fenced in?
It is not fenced in, no, I do not, oh, I do not intend on having them free range in my backyard.
You said you're gonna have a run attached to the coop itself, so it will be enclosed within the chicken run?
It's a nine, nine foot run, and then it also goes underneath the coop, the coop is elevated a few feet, about a four foot total height. Again, I have pictures if you want to see what it looks like, but.
You guys want to see pictures? I appreciate that you've talked with your neighbors, it looks a lot easier from a standpoint. I don't have any questions. There's all the questions from the board that I'm gonna make a motion for a thank two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section six one seven five, the environmental code. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Findings, again, similar findings of the other day, this is a, this is a, having hens on one's parcel, it's becoming more commonplace, based on the applicant's description of what he is presenting, what he's gonna have, he's making sure that the public is gonna be safe, that there's not any health hazards that would come with maintaining the chickens in the area. The use will not prevent any, any of the adjacent properties from the use of their properties, the use will be in general harmony with the areas. The applicant has had conversations with his immediate neighbors, with no adverse conversations, they're all supporting the applicant pursuing this variance. It's not gonna interfere with any information of the character of the neighborhood, this isn't in rear, rear of the lot, so it will not even be seen, and the hens will be enclosed in their chicken run or their chicken coop. Yeah, I think that, that all covered, any other, anything else? Yep, we'll do the same, yep. So with that, like to make a motion for a special use permit, located at five 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 Hills Pond Road, and to allow a four foot by four foot by four foot pre-made chicken coop, and no more than five hens on a zero point three acre parcel having SPL zero six three point two dash two dash five eight, located in R three, residential district, under section three fifty dash forty, three fifty dash seven five, three fifty dash four three, code of town of Webster. We are looking to put a one year review on this, as it is the first time you're doing Yeah, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Short, sorry, I apologize. Want to just be clear, the four foot by four foot is just the coop, it does not include the run, correct?
That, as I said, four foot by four foot by four foot pre-made chicken coop.
Okay, the run's not included?
Yes, thank you. Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Spink?
Aye.
Mr. Fresca?
Aye.
Mr. Mascare?
Aye.
Mr. Corso?
Aye.
You have your variance, you have one year, and then you need to, you'll be back in one year to come for the variance again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have four forty Locust Hill Drive.
Four forty Locust Hill Drive applicant Cheryl Lawless, I'm asking about a sixty four square foot ordered garden shed in the front yard, located in R three, residential district, in sections of the code, is three fifty forty seven, which is utility sheds, which indicates that they should not be located in the yard.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Lawless, my house in Manhattan. We live in the fourth out of five houses on a private drive, Locust Hill Drive. It is, none of our property abuts any public roadway, and we're asking for a shed in the front yard because there's really no other place to locate it. Our house is a nineteen fifty built house, and it's on a very large lot, an acre and a half or more, and yet only half of the lot is up on top of the hill, and the rest of it's a large, steep slope going down to, facing the lake. So the house has always had a garden in the front yard since it was built, and there are lots of mature trees and landscaping, so the essential character of the neighborhood is not going to be changed by a small shed. There's really no other way, no other place to locate it because the side yards are too small, too narrow, and also have mature trees, and it would have an impact on both neighbors on either side, so we wouldn't do that. And it's really not possible to locate it in what's considered our rear yard, because that's the lake side of the house, and it's a fairly small yard, and anything we put there would have a visual impact on all of our neighbors, so we definitely don't want to do that. It's really not a significant ask for an eight by eight shed, because the total lot is an acre and a half, and the front yard is a hundred and seventy-five feet deep by the hundred, hundred feet wide. So the eight by eight shed will only take up like less than one percent of the area of the front yard, it's gonna be tucked under a tree so that there won't be much visual impact, and we intend to have a nice looking shed, my husband says it's gonna be a she shed, we'll see. But we still have to store stuff in it. And there are some similar front yard sheds not too far from us on Lake Road at different various addresses on Lake Road, so it's not, you know, it's not asking for something that hasn't been done before. It's a small shed, no impact on the environment, no electricity, no drainage issues, and I guess it's sort of self-created because I want one, but it's, we, we have a nineteen fifty built house that doesn't have a lot of storage, so we're, you know, we're really going to use it for storage of lawn and property maintenance tools and things. And I did notify all the neighbors on Locust Hill Drive and everybody whose property abuts ours, and sent them a copy of the application and all the pictures and everything, and I heard back from almost all of them that they were thrilled. So are there any questions?
For the board, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got one question, obviously, actually I have family that used to own a place near you. Technically, isn't that your backyard because your house faces the water, so usually people would say the water is the front yard?
I say that all the time, but.
The only reason I ask is my family had a lake house on Chip Village Street, and they always say the front yard is the water side and the back, so wouldn't you technically be putting it in the backyard?
If we get to the side, that's where I would go, but I'm not sure.
Fortunately, street side. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, as Anthony said, being on the lake gives a unique perspective, because I have noticed that the lake is considered the front and the, the word side is the, the rear. Though that's not how the code reads, that is, that's how we interpret the code, or how we, how we look at the variables.
You're, it looks like you're gonna keep the, keep the shed about ten feet off your property line, is what your letter indicated to us?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And you've had conversations with all your, with your neighbors, do you have those correspondence? I don't need them here, but if you have those correspondence, do you share them with the towns, so they could keep those?
Sure, I have emails.
Yeah, it's just great to have, have it on record and have it in the file. Any other questions from the board? With that, I'm gonna make a motion for a thank two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section six one seven five, the environmental code. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to do the findings? I will keep on the next. Essential character of the neighborhood, this is, again, as I was mentioning earlier, this is a unique property, it's on the, it's on the water, so having a shed on, in the defined front yard is not uncommon for a house that is on a lake. This is, is common practice. The applicant has had conversations with all neighbors, and did not have any issues with a shed being placed on the street side of the property. The shed that is being presented is, is not going to have a, or be attachment to the neighborhood, it is a nice looking shed, and it is on a private drive, so the essential character is not going to be affected for the area. Trying to, no other remedy, trying to place the shed on the lake side or rear of the property, really is not feasible due to the, the existing photography of the.
really is not feasible due to the existing photography of the property. So it's really not feasible location. So the only location for this shed would be in the front yard or the street side of the property. This is not significant, we're talking in 64 square feet or an eight-foot by eight-foot shed that's going to be placed. Again, it's not a significant, it's not significant to the property. It's not going to affect environmental, environmental visible conditions of the property or the neighborhood itself. And it is not really, it's self-created. In fact, they want to have a shed, be able to store their outdoor belongings, but in reality, this is really the only location that this is going to be able to be provided. They are maintaining 10 feet from the side block line as well. So with that, does anybody else want to add any other findings? And I'd like to make a motion for an area variance located at 440 Locust Hill Drive.
What?
Too quick! I gotta go do my thing. To allow a 64 square foot wood garden shed in the front yard, which is not permitted on a 1.3 acre parcel having SPL 063.06-1-2-5-1-1 located in our R3 single-family residential district under sections 350-10, 350-47 of the town of Webster. Now we will take that as a house, okay.
Okay, Mr. Short.
Hi.
Mr. Corso.
Hi.
Mr. Mascare.
Hi.
Mr. Prescott.
Hi.
Mr. Fableton.
Hi.
You have your variance. You need to follow all applicable codes and will now be able to get it in one year to get it up. So, good for you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, next up, 671 Willow Lane.
671 Willow Lane applicant Brian Bishoping wants to raise a question. A three-front setback where a memo required is 40 associated with the construction of an additional 10 by 20 cover front porch on a 0.46 acre parcel located in the R3 single-family residential district. Just would like to mention to the board, the reason it says additional is because Mr. Bishoping was approved for a variance for 10 by 20 covered porch back in November.
Hey, Brian. Doing well? How are you guys? Good. What's your, what's your project? So variance was given in October. Permit was given and I requested given. And when I started to remove the bushes in front of the property to get ready for construction, I had a nice neighbor walk by and asked what I was doing and I said, "Front porch." And she said, "Oh, a wraparound porch." And I said, "No, but that would look really nice." So she stuck a little bit more than I wanted and asked for what I'm here. The, this is more of an amendment to the existing variance because it was called out for a 10 by 22 in conditions, so that's the only thing holding me up. So the ready area showed up on the screen? Uh, not exactly. So the variance, from the variance side? So the variance side, I'm not asking for any additional relief. So the variance for the front setback on Willow Lane has not changed. It's just that Willow Lane dimension has changed. Right, yeah, so the variance for that dimension has grown. Correct. Not, not closer to the street, but just gotten wider. Correct. Aside from that, nothing that was previously presented has changed and...
Any questions from the board?
I appreciate the rendering, it was very helpful.
Any of this going to be enclosed?
Same.
I was just joking, say, is your neighbor an architect? Did she give mine chewed up for you?
Uh, no, no, it was just...
It caused you to felt more green?
You're right, it was more of a, when I had the idea last year that thought had kind of been there, but never materialized to actual, like, this is going to happen. Then, of course, walking by, she mentioned it and had that thought. So it's better for the property, it's better for the house. The south wall of the house is very vacant and it would definitely clean up that south end of the house there. That south wall is all sited to a loss.
So the advantage to you truly is more appealing on top of growing the porch vehicle for...
Correct. Yep. And different times of the day, you can sit in different spots. You can get some light or stay out of the way.
And you're just going to look who's right around from front to back.
Right.
And you said it's not, it's not going to be enclosed. I believe the last variance we had stipulated that it would be used for porch furniture elements, if I remember correctly.
Furniture, grill, riddle?
Yeah, same.
Yep.
Same applies for the rest of this.
Exactly the same. Okay.
Are you doing any privacy stuff like the side, like are you going to be just keeping it quiet over?
No, I mean eventually there's probably going to be some sort of little bushes, but you have to maintain that stuff. So I'm not a huge fan of that. But, but there's probably going to be something sitting in a pot or closing. Killed by a structural thing, so I might have to...
Not to be used in storage or anything?
Any other questions on this? I'd like to open it up to public comment. Does anybody want to speak for or against the comment?
I'm Jan Amundtrod, I live directly across from Brian Bishoping's property at 670 Willow Lane.
Just a reminder, we are only going to go by minute.
Yeah. I have no objection to the porch, I think would be fine. Unfortunately, though, that side of the property where the wraparound porch would go isn't a part of the property that is, seems to me, not to be in compliance with town code or neighborhood standards. On the other side of the property, there are multiple recreational vehicles, to the best of my knowledge, not licensed, not moving, deteriorating. There's a metal shed that with the increasing number of children as the neighborhood turns over in the area could conceivably pose a hazard to, you know, kids are exploring things. There are plastic tarpes or something coming off that side of the house that blow in the wind. This winter, there was also, again, in addition to the three recreational vehicles that were there all winter, there was the snowmobile trailer. And then when Mr. Bishoping removed the first three big huge bushes in front of the house, he dumped them in the hedgerow, close to, right up front to Willow Lane, where they're currently decaying along with other yard wastes, which I believe was noted last year when Mr. Bishoping had made some comment about, yeah, he'd get it cleaned up. And then there's a pile of junk of some sort behind that, which is super unsightly. And again, my house faces directly, you guys are probably so tired, you probably could tell me how this is all laid out at this point. But it don't, it seems odd to me that a variance would be granted when the existing property is not being kept up to expectations. Thank you very much again for last year and also taking comments tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
Josh, do you have any violation or anything on this property?
There were previous cases opened. I'm not quite sure if it's continuing to be opened. I do know that we are in the process of amending some of our codes and one of them does deal with storage of recreational vehicles. We're going to be having a public hearing next month on a proposed change that would only allow one being on a property of this size. But right now, there are only three.
But there's nothing in our system, anything being obvious?
There's, there's nothing in our code that prohibits the board from considering a variance request if there is an open violation.
Thank you, appreciate that. Free back to the board, any other questions or comments from the board? Brian, you, you mentioned you moved the, as you were doing the construction for the, or starting the demo for the porch, you moved the bushes, right? I looked at that as part of the construction, right?
Yeah, removed them, yes.
They, you moved them into the hedgerow, are those going to be removed from the hedgerow at some point?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure there's going to be construction debris, so...
And that construction debris will be removed, including the hedges that were put into the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
In terms of the wraparound porch, I do think, given the location is corner property, I think the wraparound porch is a nice, nice idea. I am concerned about, I don't know if you remember your name, but about that north side of the property, as I go by, it seems like it should be maintained somewhat better. But I don't know that one could negate the others.
Anyone else? I'm going to make a motion for a type-two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR section 671-5 of the environmental code. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh, is this a new variance, right? Or is this an amendment to the old variance?
It can be handled as an amendment to the old variance.
Would we then not need to do the findings, that, how that would go? Or we should still do the findings for that portion, correct?
I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, then let me check and I would definitely make a recommendation that the new finding be made on the record.
Thank you. All right, this request is not out of character for the neighborhood. You know, having a wraparound porch on a corner lot actually, you know, my opinion, answers the neighborhood. But at the end of the day, it's not out of character for the neighborhood itself. It does not cause a detriment to nearby properties in any way, sightlines or use of their properties. It is not achievable by any other method to have the wraparound porch itself. The request is not substantial. This board last year had already provided a variance for, for a porch. This variance is to extend that porch to allow for a wraparound porch. So it is an extension of the existing, existing variance itself. There's no adverse physical environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created to have a usable porch in these neighborhoods when they were built already so close to the, to setback. The only way to really have a wraparound porch is to go beyond the setbacks themselves. It's not an undesirable change, as I said earlier, and it is not a request that is significant. This porch will not be enclosed and the elements on the porch that are to be used are, porch furniture is not to be used for storage. It'll be porch furniture, tables, grill, chairs, things of that nature, and be kept. That, I make a motion for an area variance located at 671 Willow Lane to allow a front setback 30 feet or 40 feet is required associated with construction of an additional 10 by 20 foot covered front porch on a 0.46 acre parcel having SPL 065.13-2-1-1 located in our R3 single-family resident district under section 350-12 of the town of Webster. Do you have a second?
Second.
Hello, Mr. Short.
Hi.
Mr. Fableton.
Hi.
Mr. Prescott.
Hi.
Mr. Mascare.
Hi.
Mr. Corso.
Hi. Brian, you have your variance. You have, you're going to have to get a revised building permit because you have one year of complete project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. Next up, 297 Wellington Road.
297 Wellington Road applicant Eva Palito.
Eva Palito.
Eva Palito. And I was requesting a 36-foot front setback where a memo required is 50 in reference to construction of an 8 by 19 elevated walkway located in our R3 single-family residential district.
So what I'm looking to do is create a new walkway to the entrance, the front entrance of my home. The sidewalk, I don't know if everybody is familiar with the old neighborhoods, if you do it, but the home comes right out, the doors open right out to the sidewalk, sort of. The front step is crumbling, the sidewalk there is crumbling. So I was looking for a way to fix it. And that's why I decided to have a little decking area. It's not really going to be a sitting area, it's just a decking area with weight posts, like railings, just to provide a safer, pritter entrance to the home and to add some dimension. It seems to be one of the things they're doing a lot in our neighborhood is getting a little porch and so on. So that's what I'm looking to do. So it really doesn't, it doesn't change anything or impact the neighborhood. There's a lot of people doing very similar things in the neighborhood. The difference is, you can see, they're a little bit elevated. Mine's not elevated. The front step is five inches high, then it goes right through the sidewalk. So it's, once you put the decking area on there, it raises it eight inches. So it'd be one step down. I didn't really consider any other alternatives to fix it because I was looking for a certain aesthetic when I was doing it.
Do you have a question? So if the application, right, I have indicated, actually, that's right, the, the survey indicated 36 feet from the right away on the road. However, if you do the math of 41.93 feet minus eight feet, you come up with 33.93 feet.
Right.
So...
Well, this, what they're going to construct for me actually only goes over the existing sidewalk and step that's there, does not go into the front lawn at all, so...
So it's not, I guess, is it going to be eight feet wide or...
It will probably be about seven feet wide, yeah.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, if we say it's going to be 36 feet and you go 35 feet... and you go thirty-five feet, it becomes a problem.
It does, yes.
Right, so I want to make sure that when we are, if we get that far and we're discussing what the actual variance is and I'm giving the dimensions, I want to make sure I'm giving the right dimensions.
Right, when I first came out to get the permit, even I thought the eight feet coming out the house sounded high. So I did ask him to come back out and re-measure it, and he said seven feet would be more than enough to just cover that walkway and the front step.
So even that, that would be at thirty-five feet, thirty-four point nine three feet. So I think that's, if we're talking seven feet, then that's the number I would use instead of, it was thirty-six feet. Because I think the way it's written right now, it'd be about a six foot porch. The way old information we'd have to hear would be about a six foot porch. If I'm doing my, I think I'm doing my math right?
Six feet wide, do you mean?
Correct.
And it certainly could be, yes.
Josh, a question. If, I know, I know the agenda has it listed as thirty-six feet. Are we able to adjust that dimension? Or do we need to stick with that dimension?
We technically need to stick with what was advertised.
Okay. There's what we'll do. So just so you understand, we're going to use thirty-six feet from the road, which ends up giving you a six foot wide walkway.
Okay.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what was advertised, that's what was out there.
That would be, that's fine.
All right. Any, any questions from the board?
Are you using composite decking?
Yes, they'll be the base, yes, they'll be the base, right.
How are they, so they're going to go over your stuff, right?
Yeah.
Not rip it up to concrete or?
They don't, they take it right over. They use flitters, I mean, they're.
So they're going to, they are going into the ground.
Yes.
Because they were talking about not going under the lawn, so I'm thinking.
Well, they said they break up the sidewalk. They probably have to do that, yes.
And you just didn't want to redo concrete or anything like that?
No.
Existence of stamp or anything like that. I grew up with it, I was familiar with how small the lots could be and how hard it'd be to look over things.
Yeah.
Questions? Open up to the public, maybe we won't speak for our guests. I'm going back to the board, any other comments from the board? If there's more comments, I'd like to make a motion for a type two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five of the environmental law. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. All right. So findings, this really is not affecting the essential character of the neighborhood. A lot of the houses in the area have already had these porches put on, so this is not uncommon practice. Looked at the area, looked at the character of these neighborhoods. There really is no other remedy other than a concrete sidewalk, but then you do lose dimensionality. The existing property actually is already not forming with the setbacks as the court is. So again, central character of the neighborhood does not be affected. There really is no other remedy. It is not significant. It's going to run along the face of the house to the driveway, so it's not really, there's not a huge significance and it's not going to be tall. There's no effect to the environmental or physical conditions of the area and there's not approach on property foliage. Self-created, at the end of the day, it's not self-created. You know, having some type of walkway because of the lay of the property was created or would require a variance regardless. So this is really not self-created in any way. Does anybody else want to add anything else to the findings? All right, then with that, I'd like to make a motion for an area variance located at two nine seven Wellington Road to allow a front setback of thirty-six feet or fifty feet is required associated with the construction of a deep foot, with the with the construction of an elevated walkway that'll be nineteen feet long along the front face of the width. If my calculations are correct, it'd be about six feet. So again, the front setback is thirty-six feet. Elevated walkway on a zero point two eight acre parcel having SPL zero six three point one eight dash three dash two six located in R three family residential district under section three five zero one two, if you can count the numbers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shore.
Aye.
Mr. Miss Garrett.
Aye.
Mr. Arcorsa.
Aye.
Mr. Presta.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
All right, you have your variance. You will need, you will need to get a building permit. You will need to have one year to complete the project. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have six one nine Apple Grove Circle.
Six one nine Apple Grove Circle, applicant Howie, accompanied by Mark O'Donnell and Daniel Peters. I was requesting a thirty-three point two rear setback where minimum required is fifty-five feet. Construction of a four hundred and thirty-two square foot master bedroom addition located in back of the dwelling located in R two, single family residential district.
Thank you. My name is Dan Peters. As you introduced me, with me is Jamie Holly and Mark O'Donnell, who both live at the property. And as you said, we're requesting a variance for a rear yard setback. And I just wanted to state, so it's on the record, that I did pass out, which you folks have not seen, an aerial view of the neighborhood, I'll call it, to some degree. And I've highlighted some properties in there. The highlighted properties that are in there, each one of those that I highlighted and blared next up to the ceiling there have less than a fifty-foot rear yard setback in it. I don't know exactly what each one is, but every one of those have less than that. They could have their instances, I don't know, I didn't research that. I just wanted to give you some relevance. And then there's two letters that I passed out to Mr. Shore. Both letters are supporting letters from the direct neighbors right next door that have seen the plans and gone over the plans with them and don't have issues with them. But I just wanted to kind of walk through the character of the home and what we're proposing. The character is a simple, single-story vaulted gable pitched roof addition that essentially is going to house the master bedroom suite. It is in that location because that's existing where the current master bedroom is, which is going to become sort of an office, home office. And then they're going to extend out that end to provide bathroom closet and bedroom. And then next to that bedroom, adjacent to it, to the east side of it, is an enclosed porch that they, in the future, will want to use for portion of the front hot tub and to put that underneath it. That porch would be at low level, so it wouldn't be elevated onto a deck. It would be down with the ground level, so a couple steps down to that. So that, in a nutshell, is what we're asking for leniency here tonight.
Consideration to the layout of the existing home. It's feasible, I think, from where we chose to put it. The other alternative would be off a dining room, which wouldn't really be workable with our home and how it's laid out. And with the neighborhood being in a call to setback, there's quite a bit of other additions that are local in that particular neighborhood that need the same type of solution from that side of the homes that we see. So there really is an, it's a wait for us to do it.
I also, the measurement that we're asking for leniency on is to the closest corner. It's kind of a trivoy in the back and goes further away. So if I were to take the measurement from the middle of the property, it would be pretty close to being within fifty feet. But because I took the closest corner, that's the worst case scenario.
Actually, we're also looking on that a full basement. So the basement will have an egress window for another exit for safety in that area. And then the light, our window that will be installed down there too. So we chose to do a full basement versus crawl space for additional square footage for us to utilize for storage. Doesn't impact under a situation that's existing in the house, nothing needs to be added to it. It's self-created. We really just need more space. We have three kids, they're upstairs, and they're loud. It's like a celebration of the fire.
Yeah, from underneath them.
Yeah, exactly.
The exit from the basement is going to be to the, I guess that would be the west, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's a typical egress window with a egress window well with the built-in steps that are around.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
So then the window sill would be about two inches?
It would be forty-two or less.
Right, okay.
Board, any questions?
You got letters from six eighteen, six twenty-one, correct?
Yeah, both sides.
Okay, what about six fourteen?
Honestly, they are never, the ones directly behind us, we, I think I've seen them for attentive with their second years. So I think there are actually snowbirds, I don't know how often they're there, but they're not real friendly even when they are in the open. So, and there's actually robe trees between both of them. And us moving the deck actually creates more space because there's a really large deck there right now. It's probably less than fifteen feet from the property lines or making more space than we have.
Right, and I'm actually saying, but putting this addition on and removing the deck obviously makes it not as close to the property line as the deck is. And currently, the house in its existing state doesn't even need a required setback anyways because it's not fifty feet, so.
Yeah, with the.
Right.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question, if there are no others from the board. You mentioned that this is going to have a full basement, is that correct? Do you know what you intend to do with the soils from the excavation of the basement? Do you intend to utilize it on-site or chuck it out?
Yeah, we're going to use it around the site to make drainage go away from the property, away from the addition.
Okay, because we've been having some issues with these types of additions. So if you're going to be utilizing the soil on-site, we're going to request that you provide us with a grading plan. Because what we've found is that when people affect the grading, it tends to send storm water to neighboring properties. And we have a few cases right now with very similar projects that happen too. So we're just trying to avoid future problems for you and our neighbors.
I think we should probably confirm with.
We have got, I think, the W two is already signed up to do it. We can have them together.
Yeah, we should probably confirm the quantity that they're going to stick or keep or.
Do they need it, right, I guess is a question.
The drawing's called just for positive drainage. There's no grading on there, I don't have a grading plan.
No, I guess my point, I don't recall the site being heavily sloped or anything.
No, it's flat.
No, it's pretty flat.
So to Josh's point, if you start changing the grade and you're pushing the water away from the building itself, you are now affecting your neighbors. So.
Right.
You would be better served from the town's perspective to remove the soils from the site.
Right, right.
And not utilize it on the property, especially, I mean, you're going to have, it's not going to be insignificant, right? It's a decent amount of soils.
Actually, one of the reasons to do the basement too is because we did the, like, pad off the back. There'd be so much that we'd have to bring in to level it to the back of the deck that would then create an issue, but with it going down underneath it. And it's, you have to, you can, you're.
I just want to be clear that as we grade around the building, we're going to grade away from the building.
Sure, and I think, not to speak for you, Josh, but the concern is the neighbors.
Yeah, we can't shed, we can't shed all the water to everybody's property. It's going to be absorbed by our. And the only way you're going to be able to tell that is by grading.
Yeah.
So I think we should clarify with the builder what he intends to do. In the end, my draw, for me, I don't want water coming in the. I guess, in the basement. So, but I also don't want water going to the neighbor's property. So I think in the end, can we talk to the builder and get back to you with his intention? If his intention is to use the soil on-site, we can either mandate it be removed or get you a grading.
I'll take the soil. Yeah, I know. I have a little bit.
Does that work?
Yeah, Josh, I mean, Josh, how would you, if they're not going to use the soils on-site? I mean, there would be some soils, I would imagine, used on-site regardless, right? But, you know, if the majority of it is being removed, are we going to need to see, or that would be part of the requirement permit plan, right?
Yeah, at the time of the building permissions, we would confirm which direction we're going. And at that time, if you decide to keep it on-site, we would request to review a grading.
All right. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public, seeing that there's nobody here. I'll be back to the board. And I'm going to make a motion for a type two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR, section six one seven point five of the environmental law. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Essential character of the property or the neighborhood is not being affected. As the addition is mainly in the rear of the property, a small section will be visible from the street side, but based on the plans we provided, the addition is going to marry very closely to the existing structure that is there. So the essential character is not going to change with the property as well as the neighborhood. As far as remedies, realistically, this is the only location to place this addition just based on the layout of the existing property or the existing building interior layout. Placing it anywhere else would not function as the advocate requires. This is not significant. There are additions and renovations throughout the neighborhood of similar, so this is not a significant effect to the neighborhood. There are no physical or environmental conditions that are known from the survey that was provided to us. Self-created in the fact that it is a desire of the advocate. However, it's not a significant effect to the neighborhood. Does anybody else want to add anything to that? All right, I'll make a motion for an area variance. Well, I did want to add one other thing is that there are several other properties without a fifty-foot setback in the neighborhood as well as there will be a deck removed, an existing deck that is within the fifty-foot, fifty-five foot setback, and it actually extends beyond what this addition will end up being. And it actually extends beyond what this addition will end up being. So by doing this addition, it's actually reducing or increasing the setback from what is currently existing on the property. And with that, I'll make a motion for an area variance for 619 Apple Grove Circle to allow a rear setback of 33.2 feet where 55 feet is required associated with construction of a 432 square foot master bedroom addition to a single-family dwelling on a .05 acre parcel. SPL 064.11-3-26 located in R2, single family residential district under section 3501 of the code of county. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
Mr. Miss Garrett.
Aye.
Mr. Corso.
Aye.
Mr. Prescott.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
You have your area variance. You will have to get a building permit. As Josh mentioned, if you are going to use the soils on-site, you are going to need to have a grading plan provided. You have one year to complete the project.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I can close up, alright. With that, that ends our zoning board field meeting for May 13. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Are these, these are still live?
Yes.